Good evening. Welcome to the October 16th, 2023 regular session of the Marion City Schools. I'm glad you all could make it. We have a full house tonight, so welcome, welcome. Appreciate it. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Veronica, call the roll, please. Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Widely?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. McKinnis?
Mrs. McKay?
Here. Thank you. We come now to the Superintendent's Report. I'm going to turn this over to Olympia.
Thank you, Madam President, and to all Marion City School Board members. Good evening. We are going to start off this evening with recognizing a group of students that have been accepted into the Ohio Attorney General's Teen Ambassador Board for the 23-24 school year. This opportunity was brought to us and shared with us by Mrs. Tara Dyer, so we thank you for that. And a little bit about what the board does is it basically tries to get our young people involved at the state law and government level. The high school students, they serve for a year, and they're consulted on teen-related matters, collaborating on solutions, they attend educational sessions, they get to meet the Attorney General, they participate in statewide events, and they get to engage with our elected officials. So we are extremely proud of our five students that are participating in the program, and we're going to recognize them tonight. And I first would like to ask Christian Pearson, he's going to come up and talk a little bit about this experience.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight to speak. In late August, I was selected to be a Teen Ambassador for the Ohio Attorney General's Office along with four other hiring students. The Teen Ambassador Board is made up of about 150 high school juniors and seniors from all across the state. And as the Superintendent pointed out, we're going to serve on this board for about a year, and we'll have the opportunity to closely engage with government and the law, such as advising the Attorney General's Office on issues pertinent to teens and having the opportunity to work alongside various statewide officials on those issues. Members have an open invitation to attend different conferences hosted by the Attorney General's Office, such as a law enforcement summit later this month and a human trafficking summit in January. On September 18th, we went to Columbus for the Teen Ambassador Board kickoff. During the six-hour event, we heard from four officials from the Attorney General's Office, including Attorney General Dave Yost himself, followed by a question-and-answer session with each. During the Attorney General's question-and-answer session, I asked him about his stance on capital punishment, as his office had published a report in the year before which said that capital punishment in Ohio was broken and not achieving its purpose. I then asked him how he can continue to support capital punishment after having written those things. And he says that he does not agree with capital punishment as a Christian, but says it makes sense from a policy perspective. With that said, I appreciated the opportunity to ask the state's top legal authority a question relating to an intensifying legal debate. Shortly thereafter, we were able to sit in on a live press conference where Attorney General Yost and others announced the indictment of four former Columbus Zoo officials following a years-long corruption investigation. Again, after he took questions from the press, he took questions from us, which I thought was a very interesting experience. My biggest takeaway from the day, however, was not listening to the Attorney General, but it was listening to the Director of the Policy and Legislation Section from the Attorney General's Office. That is his chief legislative liaison to the Ohio General Assembly. I want to go into public policy in college, ideally working for a government body in the area of policymaking, or maybe even serving on one. I was able to hear about all that would go into such a career, such as what to major in, what internships I would want to apply for, how to make connections, and so forth. I left the Teen Ambassador Board with a better understanding of how the Attorney General's Office works, and even better, I was able to learn more about the career path I wanted to take. I want to thank Ms. Dyer, Ms. Lidle from the College and Career Rating Office who sent me an email about how to apply for this. And yeah, it was a really great experience.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We will want to send you back to the State House and ask your legislators about where their stand is on vouchers and why all the voucher money is heading towards private and public charters, non-voted money. So if you want to talk to me about that sometimes, we could have a nice chat.
So, as you can see, the programming that the students are going to be involved in, it does require a lot of their own personal time. And, you know, as Superintendent, I'm extremely proud that the children in Marion are represented at the state level. So I thank you for applying, I thank you for your time, and I know that you're going to represent us well. So, Alora McDuffie, if we could try to recognize Alora. Ayla Longacre. Christian Pearson. Carter Rollins. And Audrey Simon. And many of our young people, I pulled them away from other activities, so please feel free to get back to your events, and thank you for coming. Next up, I know that we recognize, we have lots of visitors in the room. I don't know how we could not notice you, with all of your Marion merchants gear. I would like to ask Mr. Jeremy Donaldson to come up to the mic. We actually, another thing that really is going to be a priority of my administration is to reconnect and continue with our community partners. And the Marion merchants have been so generous, and they're going to make a donation to Marion City Schools tonight. And it's not just a donation, but it is a commitment to our partnership. So, Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Delafora. And thank you, the Marion City School Board. My name is Jeremy Donaldson, I am the President of the Marion Merchants. For those of you unfamiliar with the merchants, we are a nonprofit celebrating our 25th year as an organization with the mission to help develop young athletes who wish to play more competitive baseball and softball. In previous years, the merchants primarily focused on baseball. However, in 2022, we expanded to include softball, and it was a huge success. We currently support five baseball teams and three softball teams, totaling around 100 athletes in the Marion area. While a lot of competitive organizations charge up to $6,500 per child to participate, the merchants are able to keep costs as low as $100 through generous donations from the local businesses and families. I would especially like to thank the Knights of Columbus 671, their continued support makes all of this possible. As part of our mission, we have been tasked with finding ways to contribute and get back to the community we love, which brings me to why I'm here. Tonight, I would like to announce an exciting partnership between the Marion Merchants and the Marion City Schools. After speaking with the community members and meeting with Joe Hecker and Dave Grau, we believe restoring the Grant softball field is a wonderful place to start. I would like to thank our organization for creating this opportunity, including our Director of Baseball Operations, Walt Hawley, Director of Softball Operations, Amanda Thrush, and our Marion Merchant Board members, Justin Hamper, Ryan Dye, and Ryan Harmon. Thank you so much for letting us partner with you. We are excited to be part of this deserving effort, and we look forward to seeing the final results.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have the audience. Everybody can move up.
All right, moving along to my report, we cleared out quite a few people in a short amount of time. With us just doing the state of the schools, we really didn't have a big update. I know one of the things that I'd like to work on next week when we do my goal setting is, I know that we've talked about an outcomes monitoring calendar, so if you guys could think about that and bring some of those ideas next week, I'd like to put those together so we have a calendar for the year of what types of presentations we'll do at board meetings. Some of the things that are happening in the district around parent engagement, our elementary schools are hosting their fall literacy nights. I was able to attend Taft and Hays last week, it was wonderful, great turnout. We had a lot of community volunteers at Taft for the Tronker treat, so just want to shout out to our staff and our families for coming out to those events. Also, our parent-teacher conferences have started. We had our parent-teacher conference at Harding last week, and it was just great to actually see parents have the ability to come in and have conferences at the high school level. This year, one of the things that we did a little differently is we don't have parent-teacher conferences at the same night district-wide, because we continue to hear that it was a burden on parents, so we allowed those school buildings to choose the nights that they wanted to do parent-teacher conferences. So, so far, we'll see how it goes. But just so you know, that's why we don't just have a district-wide parent-teacher conference, because we wanted school communities to be able to have that input as to when they wanted to host those conferences. This is National School Bus Safety Week, so we will be posting something on Facebook and sending to families just as a reminder around bus safety. We also shared this with our teachers. We have the Made in Marion College and Career Event tomorrow, that's going to be at the fairgrounds at our students from Harding Willington. That's going to be from, I think it's nine to two. And this is where the students get exposed to a variety of careers, they can kind of walk around. A lot of our partners will be there, OSU, NTC, so we're really excited about that opportunity. I also thought I would just publicly announce, this is our last home football game on Friday, and we will have senior night, so we will be recognizing the seniors that are part of the football team, cheerleading team, cross-country team, and bands. The other thing I just want to mention, I was able to attend the BASSA Ohio Superintendent's Fall Conference, I think it was October 3rd and 4th, it seems like last week, but maybe it was two weeks ago. So I was able to attend some sessions and network with other superintendents from across the state. And we are preparing for the Ohio School Boards Association Conference, which is coming up in November. And Marion City Schools will be doing a presentation. Our presentation is titled "Supply and Demand: Identifying Available Resources." And we will talk about the partnerships and things that we've done to help achieve the needs of our students versus on the whole child. So we're going to, it'll be myself, Jen Sheridan, Kathy Butler, and Kalen Bash, who's the district ESP. We're just going to talk about the partnership and try to share some of those strategies with our participants. We also have been invited for the Student Achievement Fair at OSBA for our Marion Harding Agribusiness and Future Farmers of America. They are going to be showcased at the fair, so we're really excited about that, again, to put Marion City Schools on the statewide map. I also want to speak to two items that you're going to see later on that are on the agenda. Number one is the Harding Community Sports Complex Committee Approval. At the last meeting, we presented a general vision and plan for what that's going to look like here at Harding, and we do want this to be a community effort and something that the community will also be able to use. So in discussions with our small committee, our internal committee that we have now, as well as with Dr. Moody, who is going to be an integral part in us helping to obtain the funds for this project, we find that, we feel that we would like the board's approval for us to start to put together a committee. Again, nothing is final, the draft that we've seen, we will continue to work through that, and then any final construction documents would be brought back to the board, but we just want approval from the board so that we can formally put together the committee that would include internal as well as external stakeholders to begin that project. The other thing that is on here that I just want to speak briefly to are the chiller and the cooling tower projects. So we did put those out for bid, and we only had one response to that request, and they were very, very high prices, and we got back on those bids. So Jake has done some work and found a purchasing cooperative that we could purchase these from, and that's what the resolution is, that's included, so there's a different resolution for each one. But those resolutions basically are allowing us to use the purchasing cooperative, and actually, that will save us over $700,000, of which you got the breakdown for those. So I just wanted to mention that those did go out to bid, and the reason why we're using it is because the price was extremely high that we got back from the one vendor. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to Treasurer's Report. I need a motion to approve Board Minutes from September 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. Widely?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. Item B, financial approvals. Motion to approve the following financial items. September 2023 fund balances, financials for September 2023, and her checks for September 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. Widely?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
McKay? Yes, motion carried. Item C, donations. Treasurer recommends approval of the following donations: $80 to Harding High School Advertising, the Herald, for the Herald, from Jessica Deramon with curiosity, and $5,500 to Grant Softball Field from the Marion Merchants. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Quickly, I'd like to again thank the Marion Merchants, but $5,500 for the Grant Softball Field. Just briefly, I hope the board takes the fixing of that softball field. Very important, because they obviously do, and gave us the $5,500. Yet, we haven't had a plan to fix that yet. We did have one to fix the male portion up there at Grant, so hopefully, the board will figure out something to do with the $5,500 and contribute a lot more to fix that field at some point in the near future.
And I would like to thank, since I was an old Harding Herald reporter, feature editor back in the day, it's great to see that they got an $80 donation, and I appreciate that. Call the roll, please. Mr. Widely?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. Item five, hearing of the public. I don't think anybody turned in any forms. So we're going on. All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. Adoption of the agenda, motion to approve the agenda as approved. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll. Mr. Widely?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. There is no old business. We come now to item eight, Harding Community Sport Complex Committee Approval. Superintendent recommends board approval to put together a Harding Community Sports Complex Committee with internal and external stakeholders to formally begin planning and fundraising for the project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
How do we see this going forward right now? We obviously are approving to have a committee, and then what happens next?
So, in the discussions that we've had, is we would then formally put together how we're going to fundraise, as well as bringing together the people that can provide input on the plan.
But when you say "we," who's the "we"?
We have Jake, myself, Sean Kearns, the baseball, softball coaches, Jill Hecker. Did I miss anybody from our team? Marcia Pitts is on our team, and then we just met with Dr. Moody a couple Fridays ago, and he met with our small internal committee. But we want to start taking it to the outside community and start bringing some more people on board.
And who does, I guess, who decides that? Like, who are we taking on? Because the committee, the way I would see it, is approaching the community on behalf of the Marion City School Board of Education, yet no member of this board that I know of has been approached other than anything, saying if we want to be on it. I would assume the board would have discussions at some point about how we're going to formulate a committee, how many people's going to be on it, why are we taking certain members, why are we leaving some out? You know, the whole process, I don't think, has been approached to the board. I understand we have some internal things going on, but I think if we're having a committee that then goes out and represents to the world that the Board of Education sent them, I think the Board of Education should be involved in who's on this committee, or having a representation, or something.
Well, she did send out an email asking if there were people from the board that wanted to be on the committee.
No, I get that.
And so, once you have a committee, then they can open it up to more members, because you're looking for people who can help get this funded.
I agree with everything you're saying, like, meaning help get it funded, but who's making the determination, who's on the committee, what's the makeup, how many members we have, and how we're going forward? That's not been a discussion by anybody, I mean, this board, I'm saying. So, I mean, I appreciate asking if board members want to be on, I think it should be bigger than that, meaning the committee is probably the biggest, the committee is probably the biggest decision you make, because they have to push it out into the community. So if you have the wrong people on the board or not, for instance, let's say I put two Marion General Hospital people on there, but leave off Wyandotte, do we want Wyandotte? Do we not? I mean, these are discussions we should be having.
Well, I think, to your point, when we were building the new schools, and we had a bond on the ballot, we had community stakeholders, and so it was not really, I mean, but those folks weren't really fundraisers, they were just people that we knew would be promoting Marion City Schools and the opportunities that we had for the money that we received from the state of Ohio, because we received so much because of the way they calculated the money. But, and I know, my family donated to the bond, and we did a lot of things, but there was never anything that said, if you wanted to be on the committee, you couldn't. It was very inclusive, but it was still not a huge committee. But we got the job done, and we passed the bond on the first go-around. So, you know, when you're raising money, it's important to, you know, help somebody like Dr. Moody and some of those other folks that want to push this forward for us, that we come and support them, and then we can worry about all the smaller details, like on who, maybe it's not a smaller detail, but who wants to be on the committee. So there'll be an opportunity, if you have people that you want on it, you can submit those. I mean, it's not a secret society, it's something that...
Yeah, but I think what we could do, though, Rocky, it looks like you're on the extracurricular. I think that would fit into that particular category as well, and who drives the agenda for the extracurricular committee?
Sean Kearns is the point person.
Yeah, so why don't we just get with Sean Kearns, and then we'll add it on to our subcommittee, and then we can have further conversation.
Yeah, I just think we need to have, you know, what's the committee, is it 21 members, 30 members? I mean, how many are we doing?
We can...
How's it look, you know?
So maybe we can contact Coach Kearns and add that to the agenda on our subcommittee.
Obviously, he should be on it, probably the K coaches.
Yeah, but he drives the agenda for the extracurricular.
We need to talk about who should be on, say, committee. I know that's not necessarily tonight, tonight is just approval, and we're going to go forward and establish a committee is the way I'm taking this.
Right.
And some of those names have already been mentioned, correct? The baseball coaches, softball coaches.
They're on it.
So are you talking like the board as a body meets with who's currently on it, and then we...
No, I'm talking about the structure. The structure of it, should it be a 25-person committee, should it be a 20?
But you're talking about a special meeting to do this, though, correct?
It doesn't necessarily have to be special, we can have a regular board meeting.
Let's just, let's get them going, and then we can come back and revisit this.
Correct. I mean, people like Dr. Moody would be on it, possibly, like the mayor to be on it, Kevin Hall. I mean, there's people that we probably know, and maybe you have a name, Mr. Widely, that I don't, and vice versa, that maybe should be on there.
And all of us, okay.
Yes, all of us.
Somebody from the merchants.
Correct, yeah, correct.
So we'll just, can we just add that to our agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Veronica, call the roll, please. Mr. Widely?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. Thank you for that work. We're going to go on to item nine, agreements, contracts, NCO ESC Adaptive PE Program. Where am I, six? Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and North Central Ohio ESC, which will provide adaptive PE services for students at the cost of $2,500 per student, retroactive to August 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion? Second.
Discussion?
For the sake of the public, could we just get a brief, I know we have it in front of us, but just to explain the program and how long we've used it and what the purpose of it is?
It should be an attachment.
The update that I have here, and if you need more information, Jen Sheridan, but this is for adaptive PE services at Hays Elementary and Grant Middle School. We are using them to help meet the needs. As you know, we've been short in adaptive PE teacher, so we utilize North Central Ohio ESC to help meet those students' needs.
And we're asking that it be backdated to the, have we been using it all of August? Since school started, basically?
Jen's going to address that.
Sorry.
Hi, so yeah, we've been using them since August. NCO ESC went through a major transition this year with their whole student services department, so we are just delayed in getting the contract and getting the... so we are just delayed in getting the contract and getting it to you guys.
And as far as this contract goes all the way to July, we're not, we don't service all the way to July, do we?
Not unless we would owe compensatory minutes, we shouldn't. It should be the school year.
Okay. So, we expect it to end at the school year, but we put it in July in case it bleeds into
I'm guessing they do it because of the fiscal year, but we could potentially need them if we owed services. I don't think we will, but it would cover us.
I appreciate that. And if it, if we don't owe services, it just ends, we don't owe for the month of, like, July?
Oh, no.
If no one's using the services, right?
No.
Okay.
How many students are using this now?
It'll be, it's twenty, but it will, you know, that could fluctuate if people get identified or taken off.
Great.
But shouldn't be too many more.
And we've used this in the past, correct?
Last year was the first time we had to, yeah. Hopefully, next year, we'll have it filled.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, E's Therapy Virtual SLP Services. This is the St. Mary's VIB, Marion City General Fund. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and E's Therapy, which will provide virtual speech therapy pathology services at a rate of ninety dollars per hour, retroactive to October 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And these are for the students at St. Mary's?
Yep.
Not for ours, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tax dollars. That does say general fund on our budget, it does not come from our general fund, only comes from sixty.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. All right. Item C, Title I Pooling Agreement with Elgin. Superintendent recommends an agreement between Elgin Local and Marion City Schools to pool Title I funding for St. Mary's services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, Taft-Chiller Project, hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. This is coming out of Esser Funds. The superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and the K Company for the chiller replacement project at Taft Elementary. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is, Madam Superintendent, this was what I emailed, and these have all been competitively bid, and we got one person. So if it says in the contract that there was a, there was a statement basically saying, hey, we're waiving that due to necessity, or something like that, that, we did competitively bid it.
If you read further down there, it says that we did competitively bid it and only got one bid, and instead of rebidding it a second time?
Correct.
Now we're going to waive that.
Yep, okay. Just making sure I want everybody to know that we did competitively bid it.
Absolutely.
Yep, all right.
And that's due to the urgent necessity exception, correct?
Right.
So we don't have to rebid it.
Correct.
Correct, yep, all right.
So Veronica, do we, do we have to vote on these separately? Since they're all...
We should, because each one is a separate project.
Okay.
And part of this whole process is to make sure we're under federal compliance, this is federal funds, so we do need to.
Okay.
And that work starts as soon as the equipment comes in, I'm assuming?
I'm assuming.
So the equipment's like thirty-five weeks out?
Oh, I thought...
As soon as that happens.
We're getting new chillers at work, and they still aren't working, and so we have no heat in our building.
Ouch, that's yucky.
Yeah, and it costs a million dollars.
Wow.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second, and I want to thank Jake for all the hard work that went into this, because he is saving us about seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars.
Nice.
Too bad you don't get a cutback. Kickback.
Just get a pat on the back.
Exactly, thank you for your service. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item E is the Garfield Chiller Project. This also, let me see, eight, nine, this also comes out of Esser Funds for a hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. And there's the language, same as the first. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I wondered if you would.
I was just going to wait.
All right. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item F, McKinley Chiller Project, hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-four cents through Esser. Same specs as the last. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item G, Hayes Cooling Tower Replacement Project, a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, also from Esser. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and the K Company for the cooling tower replacement project at Hayes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Is there a need to go into executive session? All right. All righty here. We don't have any amendments? All right, Consent Calendar Approval. These are items A through L. The Consent Agenda Approval, all matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. The board will follow Board Policy 0165.1, Section E, in regards to the Consent Agenda. The Superintendent recommends approval of all Consent Agenda Items. Employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt, and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all other necessary documentation. Do I have a motion? I don't need a motion.
Yes, you do.
I need a motion, sorry. Sorry. Always the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. So we go over... Oh, I did want to thank Steve Clark and Carol Better for their service. They'll be retiring at the end of the school year, so congratulations to them. All right. Future board meetings. We will meet again, because we like each other so much, on October 23rd in this room, and that will be to set goals for Olympia. Committee reports. Do we have an extracurricular meeting report? We good? Okay?
Yeah, extracurricular, I think we just met and had glowing reports from the, our fall sports. I understand that they are winding down. Our school musical is coming up. I saw where we had an email as to how we could purchase some of these tickets, and so it gives us an opportunity to go out and see some of the outstanding talent that we have. I would like to make sure that all board members have looked at our new fee schedule stuff, and Jake, Sean Kearns, and who else worked on that, did we say?
Julie.
Julie, yeah, our new fee stuff. It's very concise, and I think it is a great document that we can utilize here in the district as far as rental fees and things are concerned. So if you guys haven't had an opportunity to look at that, maybe we can look at that and discuss it at the next extracurricular.
Also, I think, getting back to that, the play, that they're looking...
Les Mis?
Yep, anybody wanting to be in the program or donate to be in the program, I think they're to get ahold of Ms. Carter.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Ms. Carter?
Kendra. Oh, okay.
Athletic Department or Extracurricular Department here at the high school, you're able to take out advertisement for a fee for your business, or to say hey to anybody in the, I think, in the play.
I didn't see that, okay.
I think we just got an email on that one. I think you have roughly about twelve days to get that back to her.
Okay.
So, any business looking to advertise.
Olympia, did I miss anything from...
I don't think so. Buildings, ground, and safety. Rocky and Tara, anything for that?
Well, Mr. Ratliff had a great idea.
Yeah, I wasn't at the last one, but I think they went over all the projects that are being completed, looking at the notes, all the projects that, some of the stuff that we just voted on, I guess, and so...
Tabitha talked about your ideas about safety, as far as, you had a great idea about who should have our fobs and stuff, so I think they followed through on that as well.
Yeah, I think, I think what Tara's referring to, you know, for safety, I think it's an idea that's been, we're trying to get, make sure all our law enforcement agencies, whether you're the city, county, highway patrol officer, has access to our buildings at all times, so, for the safety of our students and staff.
Ted and I met on regarding communications, and that one, you should probably read about it, because it does involve some personnel, and how we're going to move forward. But if you have any questions, reach out to Ted, or me, or Julie. Curriculum. Tara and Scott.
Curriculum was interesting. Our SRO and our social studies teachers are implementing a, the Peace Officers Curriculum that is required by the Ohio Revised Code. I talked to our SRO, and although she was nervous, because she's not a teacher, she did present a lesson plan and invited us to come in and see what's going on. It's my understanding that it has to be taught four times, correct, in the year? And they've been following the guidelines outlined in the ORC, as well as looking at ways in which they could cooperatively work with each other on lesson planning. So the Peace Officers Curriculum is being implemented as we speak.
Great. All right. Diversity and Equity, that would be Scott and me, and Scott, you were unable to get there. So we just talked about the equity audit moving forward, and again, we have minutes on that one, too, so I would recommend checking those out, and if you have any questions, letting me know, or reaching out to Johnny or Olympia, who can help you think through the processes. So it was a good meeting. Finance, we will probably meet in November, right? And policy, that was Ted and Scott, were you able to? Okay. So Legislative Liaison, that would be Ted. I would just, that legislation piece, vouchers is gonna, it's starting. There are so many pieces that are impacting public education at the State House. If you have access to OSBA, reaching out to Tracy Richardson, or I think Bill Reinecke is our senator, there's a lot of stuff going on that needs to be, we need to challenge these folks in Columbus about what they're doing to our schools. They're bringing back, I believe, the bathroom bill, so, which will impact our LGBTQ students. So we just need to be really aware of what's happening at the State House, because there's a ton. They don't recess until the end of December, I believe, or Christmas time. Student Achievement, Tara?
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, we did all that? All right, let me see, what else? If there was something else. All right. Item sixteen, First Reading of Board Policy Updates. They are there for your perusal.
Real quick, on the conflict of interest, one, we have, some of it says, obviously, we don't want conflicts of interest or that to affect having any kind of contract with the district. Some of this reads as a board member, some of it reads as a board member's family, so hopefully, we can look at that and make sure it, I think it should be the board member or any of its immediate family, his or her immediate family, that would have an interest should probably abstain from voting, but, but some of it, some of it is just, says a board member, and then other parts refers to the family. I think everyone should be a board member and/or his family, or her family. And then the other one on job-related expenses, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, we Xed out a bunch on policy number four, 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 zero. It says, "Staff members must provide itemized receipts for approved expenses in order to be reimbursed." I'm proposing that that's true, however, I think it should also, we should also have something giving our staff member the benefit of the doubt, that if they would lose a receipt or something, that the treasurer is able to verify. For instance, if we sent them to an activity, and they had lunch, and they lost the receipt, but yet they can bring into the treasurer a credit card bill where they put thirteen dollars on this credit card, I think they should be reimbursed for that.
The problem is, you can't reimburse for things like alcohol.
No, I understand that, but...
So like a restaurant receipt, if you don't have the detail, you don't know really what they did, so...
No, I get it.
Yeah.
So I think that should say something to the effect of, "Provide itemized receipts for approved expenses in order to be reimbursed," or something to the effect of anything the treasurer is willing to accept.
Can we give two weeks to get another receipt?
Yeah, they have two weeks.
Yes, okay.
Normally, what we do say to people, and we've never had somebody not be able to do it, but like, if I want to eat at Steve Dakota Grill, you can call them and they'll give you an itemized receipt. So they do have time. It's not immediate that they have to, yeah.
Just trying to give our staff as much latitude and administrators as much to approve things that might not be an itemized receipt to verify.
Are you in four, four, oh, or three, four, four, oh?
The classified staff job-related expenses, right here.
Okay.
So just, I mean, that's just what I'm proposing, you know?
It looks similar.
I mean, I get it, but if our bookkeeper is able to accept it...
Our treasurer?
Yeah, treasurer, the person doing the items, you know? I would be fine with it if the treasurer's okay with it, so I don't, I'm just trying to give some latitude to...
All right. All right, so item seventeen. This is the final reading and approval of Board Policy three, three, excuse me, three, four, four, oh.